...address the outer perimeter warehousing issues to effectuate the goals of the Alameda Corridor.
Thank you, and with that, that's our last speaker, so let's go ahead on this item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much.
And joining us now is District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn. Ms. Hahn, welcome back to Council Week in Review, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Jack. It's good to be back.
I fly all the time. I know you fly quite a bit, too, in and out of LAX. We heard Mr. Foote's explanation from the union side for some of the reasons, but how is it possible to have understaffing at an airport like LAX?
Well, I agree. You know, LAX is the fourth busiest airport in the nation, and it's unconscionable to me that we have about, you know, thirty-four air traffic controllers when we should have about forty-seven. So I think it's a dangerous situation. The federal government issued a report called, you know, Airport Safety, and said that LAX leads the nation in incursions, which are near misses, and in the same report, they said short staffing or low staffing in the control tower could contribute to that.
Do we use non-certified controllers to make up the difference at LAX? And by the way, what does it mean to be certified? Who does the certification?
Yeah, you know, we do. I think right now, in our tower at LAX, we have about eleven. They're called developmentals. They're interns, they're trainees, and they need, you know, an instructor with them at all times, so they're basically learning on the job there, and so that's something that I'm not comfortable with. I think we need to have forty-seven certified air traffic controllers in that tower at all times, so it's a problem.
It was stated during the meeting, of course, that you heard, that because of a rule change in the retirement requirements, a lot of experienced controllers have been unexpectedly leaving. Is the training process simply not keeping up, or are there not enough candidates being recruited at this point?
Well, that's true. I mean, part of our short staffing is as a result of people either retiring or attrition, but the problem is we have too few air traffic controllers, certified air traffic controllers at LAX. Again, this is an FAA problem. It's up to them to do the training, it's up to them to do the hiring, it's up to them to make sure that there's enough candidates out there, ready and waiting in the wings to become air traffic controllers. This is not an area where the city of Los Angeles can hire people. These are not city employees, these are not LAX employees, these are actually FAA, federal government employees, much like our TSA screeners and the baggage screeners that we see at the airport.
What's the situation at the other big airports, you know, New York, Chicago, Atlanta? Are they the same as LAX in terms of staffing?
Well, our local air traffic controllers are telling us that this is a problem at other airports in the country, that we have dangerously low levels of certified air traffic controllers in a lot of our busiest airports. Apparently, it is a problem across the country, but I'm concerned about LAX. I mean, this is an issue that is very important to me. We want flights to come in and out of here, we want the tourism industry to be strong, but we want to make sure that LAX is safe, and I think one of the areas where it is not safe as it could be is up in the tower.
Well, for people who have not been in the tower at LAX, the amount of stress involved with directing air traffic at one of the nation's busiest airports is extremely high, just during a regular work shift, but because of what are perceived as staffing shortages, some of the controllers, we understand, may be working double shifts, perhaps making mistakes even more likely. What can be done about that in the short term, do you think?
Well, I think that's our issue. Our issue is we should have forty-seven certified air traffic controllers in our tower, and we're down about thirty-three or thirty-four. So you do work extra shifts, and fatigue, we know, contributes to all of us in our jobs. You're going to make mistakes, you're going to have bad judgment when you're tired and fatigued. The only way to solve this problem immediately is for the FAA to assign more certified air traffic controllers to the tower at LAX. That could solve the problem of double shifts and fatigue.
You've heard, no doubt, other people say that it's a larger problem than just staffing in the tower, that there's too much aluminum there and not enough concrete, that we've just got too many flights too closely spaced.
Well, you know, I don't agree with that. You know, since 9/11, LAX has not made up the number of flights that we had pre-9/11. We're nowhere near at capacity on our four runways. We've capped ourselves to about seventy-eight million passengers annually. We're about sixty-three million passengers annually right now, so we haven't really made up the lost flights that we've lost since 9/11. So I also think that that theory doesn't work for the rest of the country. I mean, if you start delaying or increasing the spacing between flights at LAX, that's going to have a ripple effect across the country, and I think that sets up a very bad precedent for flights coming in and out of LAX and at all the other airports. What we need to do is have more certified air traffic controllers to handle the flights that do come in and out of LAX on a daily basis.
Still, some of those numbers really hang in the air. If there are maybe eighteen hundred flights a day, that's about seventy-five an hour coming in, and you've got them changing across the taxiways and across active runways, the potential for incursions is certainly there.
Well, certainly, the geography of the airport needs to be looked at. I mean, there's a lot of discussion about increasing the space between runways on the north and the south. We've done that on the south, and we're looking to do that on the north runways. But again, we are not at all at capacity on any of our runways at any one time, so we have room to grow, but we need to make sure that those air traffic controllers are directing traffic on the flights that do come in and out of LAX.
I'll tell you, the last couple of times I've come into LAX, especially from the east coast, one of the mitigating factors for more airplanes is the fact that the gates are all used up. Half the time, you have to wait out there on the taxiway until the gate opens, so you can go to the terminal.
Well, you know, that's one of the things I'm also pushing, is we need to modernize LAX. We haven't done anything there since the 1984 Olympics, when we built the Tom Bradley International Terminal. We're about to modernize that terminal, but we need more contact gates out at LAX, and that's one of the things I'm pushing for, is more contact gates. We're going to be building a midfield concourse, which will handle around twenty gates. We're going to build some gates on Tom Bradley International Terminal. So you're exactly right, we need more gates, and that's what we're doing. We're allowed to build these gates under the settlement that we agreed to with the stakeholders that were involved in the LAX master plan, so that's something I'm pushing, to modernize this airport. It needs to be modern, we need to have more contact gates, we need to be prepared for the big, large, new generation of aircraft, like the Airbus, the A380, and the Dreamliner that Boeing's built, but we also need this airport to be safe. That's our number-one priority, is public safety.
By the way, before I forget, this extra terminal, the extra contact gates for planes, has that already been green-lighted in the master plan?
Yes, that was green-lighted in the master plan, but nobody was talking about it, and then I was hearing from the airlines that, you know, the airlines are beginning to choose their routes, and a lot of them have decided they don't need to land at LAX anymore, and they can fly over us, and that would be disastrous for our local economy. So when I realized that the midfield concourse had been green-lighted, you know, I said, "Let's move that forward," and I got the agreement of the Airport Commission and the mayor to move that project forward as quickly as possible. That would be a big difference in our ability to accommodate the airline industry and the passengers that want to come to LAX.
Of course, you've also got Ontario under the Lawa umbrella, and Palmdale is still sitting there, waiting for somebody to decide it's really going to be useful.
That's true. I mean, certainly, we believe that the entire region should bear the burdens and the benefits of air traffic, and that's something that we're all really pushing for, is more use, certainly, of Palmdale and Ontario, and that's something we can do, but, you know, again, most people want to fly in and out of LAX. That's where the most international flights are. We are the international hub, so while that's a good idea, and we're pushing for that, the fact of the matter is, most airlines and most people want to fly in and out of LAX. That's where the most connections are, and that's what makes air travel more convenient for people. But we think in the future, we're going to do more things to encourage this regional growth of air traffic.
These incidents are somewhat blandly called incursions, but as you correctly pointed out a few moments ago, they're really averted disasters, and an increase in incursions could be directly related, by your estimation, to the decrease in air traffic controllers, and that's the bottom line.
Well, yeah, you're right. Incursions is a nice word for, you know, almost disaster. I mean, it's a near miss, is what it is. And again, it was the federal government's own report that said LAX leads the nation in incursions. I believe we've had about fifty-five since 2001, but they also said in the very same report that short staffing of our air traffic controllers could be one of the reasons that we have those incursions. So I just say, let's cover all of our bases, let's work on the layout of LAX, our runways, let's build more new gates, but let's ask the federal government to assign what we're authorized for, and that's forty-seven certified air traffic controllers. Let's make sure we've covered all of our bases. May not be one thing or the other, but let's do everything the best we can.
As you know, after hearing the council's discussion and the things that you had to say in public, Ian Gregor of the FAA said the majority of the runway incidents, in his opinion, have not been close calls, that most of the problems have been due to pilot error. I presume you don't agree with that.
Well, you know, I'm sure if you were one of those passengers on one of those planes, you would consider it a close call. And, you know, we don't want to be an accident waiting to happen. We don't want to have an accident at LAX. We want to be safe. And while pilot error certainly sometimes is one of the contributing factors to, you know, incursions, we know that we are not staffed to the level we need to be up in that control tower. We're the fourth busiest airport in the nation. Let's make sure that we have enough people up in that tower, and what you've already said is a very stressful, very, a job that has incredible responsibility attached to it. Passenger safety is key. Let's just up the staffing level in the towers.
You mentioned briefly a while ago, one of the tremendously important parts of LAX in the sense that it's a conveyor belt for tourism here in Southern California. How important is that to the region?
Well, you know, tourism is extremely important in Los Angeles. It's the second-largest industry in Los Angeles. I love the statistic that says, for every increase of four percent in tourists that come to Los Angeles, that's a direct hit of twelve million dollars to our general fund. Those are the dollars we want to have spent in Los Angeles. Those are the dollars, when they go into our general fund, that then we can, on the city council, help to fund our police and our fire and our streets and our potholes and our trees. I mean, that's good money. So we want tourism to come here, and frankly, since 9/11, we have not made up for the tourists that used to come here. So we want to make sure that we do everything we can to keep tourists here. We want our hotels to be full. This is income for taxis, for restaurants, for hotels. People spend money when they come to Los Angeles, so we want to make sure that LAX is welcoming, it's inviting, it's safe, and more importantly, that the airlines are feeling that this is an airport that they want to make sure is included in their routes.
Finally, if someone is persuaded to try to take action because of what they've just heard you say, how could they call, write, or email representatives? Would the federal representatives be the right people? How do you contact who you need to get to?
Right, and that's exactly right. This is, again, is a federal issue. If it was up to me, I'd hire him tomorrow, but the FAA is the one that assigns the controllers to our tower. What I did yesterday, after we passed this resolution on the city council, I personally wrote a letter to all of the congress members in the LA delegation, and let's start with, you know, our two women senators, Barbara Boxer and Dianne Feinstein. You can make sure that they hear this, but make sure you know who the congress members are. You know, there's Jane Harmon, there's Diane Watson, there's Howard Berman, there's Henry Waxman, there's Linda Sanchez, there's Lucille Roy Bell Ollard. All of these congress members care about Los Angeles, it's in their interest, Maxine Waters. And if you don't know who your congress member is, ask your council member to let you know who your congress member is, but let's tell them that we in Los Angeles have a very grave concern about this level of staffing in our air traffic tower. We want to get the number up. We're a busy airport. We deserve to have the federal government's attention on this very serious matter.
And of course, every one of those people flies in and out of LAX, just like you and me. District 15 Councilmember Janice Hahn, thanks again for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks, Jack. It was good to be here.
And again, the motion to urge the FAA to increase certified air traffic controller staffing at LAX to the full authorization level passed with a vote of fourteen ayes. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live, in their entirety, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending January 11, 2008. On behalf of Frank Ayala and everyone here on Channel 35, I'm Jack Pobchroyd. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
If coyotes are in your neighborhood, here are some important steps to protect your home. Secure all garbage containers with straps. Spray garbage containers with ammonia to hide the odor of food. Bring garbage containers out the day of pickup. And never leave garbage containers open. Fences should be six to eight feet in height, extending into the ground three to four feet. The top of a fence should have an angled addition. Randomly blinking lights or water sprinklers activated by sound or movement can deter a coyote. Collect yard fruit as soon as possible. Keep your home garden properly fenced. Remove pet-drinking and eating bowls to the inside of the house. Keep all pets inside the house or in an extremely secure enclosure. When off your property, walk your pet with a leash, and never allow your pet to roam away from the house by itself. Above all, never feed a coyote. You endanger yourself, your children, and everyone in your community. If you have any questions about coyotes, please call this number.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning. Today is Friday, January 18th, 2008, and this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. On Fridays, we traditionally have presentations, which we will have this morning. We are waiting for a quorum. I would ask Council members Parks, Reyes, and Smith, and Mr. Wesson, to please make their way down to the council chambers so we can begin our city council meeting. If you are unable to be here today, you know that you can go on www.lacity.org and be able to hook up to the city council meeting. We also are on Channel 35 and encourage your participation. Council meets Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The first Friday of the month, we are in our Van Nuys City Hall, which will be in the next two weeks from today. We will be in Van Nuys City Hall. So again, I would ask Council members Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Mr. Wesson to please make their way down to the council chambers. Thank you. We anticipate Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith to make their way here any moment. And so we'd like to go ahead and begin with our presentations this morning and acknowledge Eric Garcetti for our first, our president, our first presentation today. Mr. Garcetti.
Good morning, Madam President, and thank you so much, and a very good Friday to everybody. You know, December 8th, 2007 was a day that will be long remembered for a knock-down, drag-out fight that was waged and won. Nope, it wasn't a college football game. It wasn't a boxing match. It wasn't even a debate between the presidential candidates. On December 8th, the Sirens met Fight Crew in historic Filipino town for the 2007 Championship Roller Derby game. Roller Derby is back here in Los Angeles, and I'm proud that the Los Angeles Derby Dolls Roller Derby League now calls the 13th Council District their home. More than 60 women athletes who participate in the league train and compete at the Doll Factory where their banked track, that's an inclined track, is housed. Literally thousands of fans have come out every single time that they have had a match to watch and to witness a piece of history. But thousands of fans in December came out to witness the fast, furious, and brutalizing championship game where the Sirens eked out a two-point win within the last 10 seconds of one of the most exciting games in the league's history. I know you're used to pretty tame presentations sometimes here on Friday, but I want to show you something very special here today. I applaud all the women who competed throughout the season. But today, I want to recognize the 2007 champions, the Sirens. So here they are, the captain, Puncharello. The co-captain, Amber Alert. Got blockers, Cannon Doll. Pita. Rider Hard. And she does. Kilo Kitty. Scarlett, your hands off. And the women who jammed during the championship game, Roxy Cotton, V Lee, and the indomitable, unstoppable, Mile-A-Minute. Let's give them all a round of applause. Congratulations, ladies. And at this time, I want to recognize the Derby Dolls co-founder, Rebecca Nenberg, aka Demolitious, to say a few words. Welcome, and let's give her a round of applause. She's not on skates. But on behalf, first, we'll hear from the Sirens in a moment. But before, I just want to present this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, also signed by the mayor. We recognize all sorts of athletes here in city council chambers, championship football teams, youth that have come from around here. We have great baseball players and football players who have come through. But these women here are the true athletes who train hard and compete in a tough, strategic sport. We love having you in the district. We loved having you at the Christmas parade. For those of you who have never seen the Roller Derby live, I highly encourage you to check it out, and the schedule is available online at www.derbydolls.com. So congratulations on a great year. I'm looking forward to the opening game next weekend. And on behalf of the city, congratulations to our champions. Let's give a round of applause to the Sirens, champions from 2007.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And before we do hear from them, we do have one council member, Mr. Labanche.
Director John McCreary earlier and reminiscing about the days of the T-Birds and the history and all that, which really, if you look back in sports, and I wanted to recall all their names to memory, obviously, but those women were very much pioneers, just like Amelia Earhart, who lived in my district, and there's a statue for her out there at Magnolia and Tahunga. But, you know, there's going to be, someone's going to see you and say, "I want to be like you." There's somebody who sees me at Ham and says, "I want to be like you." There's some girl, and a program that our Parks Department have, that Janice Hahn always cheers for, is girl power, to get girls involved in sports and recreation. So I just want to congratulate you as athletes, and as entertainers, and as making people inspire. Always pay fair is the only motto here. And I have one request. If you could ask Mr. Garcetti to move to the right just a little bit, and everybody get around him. I want to send us to this little picture for him. That's a good shot there. Good job. All right, Eric, come on, put both hands up, Eric. Come on. Good job. All right, three, two, one. I got a, you've got red hair, Eric. I love it. All right, good job.
Thank you, Tom.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations to all these women.
Thank you, Tom. And our captain, who's going to say a few words on behalf of the champions, please welcome Puncharello.
Thank you very much. It's a great honor to be here. I've written a couple things, and then I threw it away. So just a couple of things about our league. We are made up of very dedicated women, and we are an all-volunteer league, and we man, or should I say, woman, our events and our community outreach. And we are responsible for training new women to be skaters, and we're responsible for putting together our teams. And these girls that are standing before you are amazing women. And I'd just like to say the names of the girls on our team that couldn't be here today because they are working. We have Hot Wheels, Paris Kilton, Kung Pow Tina, Raggedy Anarchy, and Dinabicha. We've worked really hard this year. We've had a couple misfortunes. We had a time when we didn't have a track to skate on, and we're really proud of our track. We built it ourselves. And so these girls, instead of being disheartened, they got together, unified, and they took their time to drive out to parking lots at the beach and skate outside in the cold. And we worked really hard, and I think it showed off at the game. And I'd just like to say that I'm so proud of my team. They're just an amazing bunch of women, and I'd really like to thank Council President Eric Garcetti, Council District 13, the city council, historic Filipino town. We're so proud to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. We look forward to coming and watching you all, so thank you very much. I'd like to now acknowledge Ms. Perry for our next presentation.
Hey, Robert. No, stand next to me. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have a very, very special individual standing next to me, and his name is Robert L. Watt, or Bob, as we call him. And I am pleased to be able to recognize his very long career. After more than 35 years of serving in the Los Angeles Philharmonic as the Assistant Principal French Horn, Bob Watt is retiring. And I wanted to take this opportunity to wish him well and to honor him for his incredible work. And his career has been incredible, but there's a more unique and more very personal reason that I've chosen to honor him today. Bob's passion for music and talent was discovered at a very, very early age. He studied at the New England Conservatory with Harry Shapiro of the Boston Symphony. Mr. Shapiro recognized his talent and worked with him to cultivate his skills, and placed him in music camps to further his studies during summers, and gradually working the young hornist into professional freelance work in the Boston area. As Bob progressed further, he began to play as a substitute hornist with the Boston Symphony Orchestra under Eric Leinsdorf. He attended the Berkshire Music Festival at Tanglewood in 1969 before being hired as Assistant Principal French Horn of the Los Angeles Philharmonic under music director Zubin Mehta. In addition to continually performing as a soloist in the Los Angeles area, Bob began engaging in public speaking, going to local colleges and organizations in the African-American community and engaging young people through his passionate words and inspirational story. In the late '80s, he helped organize an African-American brass quintet that performed throughout the United States and abroad. In 1989, he was invited to serve on the grant panel of the National Endowment of the Arts Chamber Music Division in Washington, DC. As a volunteer, Bob began working with young people at Crenshaw High School, teaching those who are interested in learning the French horn, and steering students into thinking about attending college as music majors. He's a man of many, many talents, and in addition to his outstanding musical background, he is a licensed airline pilot, and is instrument-rated, and he is a fencer and a published writer of magazine articles about other musicians. But the thing I like most about Bob is he is dogged and determined. Several years ago, Bob said he was thinking of retiring, and he just, well, he literally nagged me until I found something for him to do. And I have to tell you, what he has done has been transformative. I often speak about New Image Emergency Shelter in my council district. It is a shelter for homeless people, and we are constantly struggling, and it has 650 beds, and everyone is welcome. And Bob has organized a number of concerts, French horn or brass ensemble concerts, in the shelter for the clients. First year he did it, I think he had, what, four pieces?
A French horn quartet.
And then this year, this past year.
Six.
Six, plus a soloist. And to watch people who are trying to recover from addiction, fighting to recover from mental illness, coming directly from the street, and to see the primordial impact, the music that Bob brings to them is nothing short of extraordinary. And that is why I think it's so important to thank him for his hard work, and to recognize the symbolism and the impact your career has had on the lives of so many people. But this latest iteration, to be able to reach out to people who are homeless and to touch their lives too, is just amazing, and I just really wanted to thank you. So Bob Watt, let's give him a big hand.
I kept talking. Well, I didn't have much to say, but I would like to say that I think that everyone should have access to fine music and not have to pay $400 a seat to go to Walt Disney Concert Hall. And in the future, I would like to, as my post-Philharmonic activities, to be able to be the person that would put music in places that normally, there's just, it's almost unthinkable. But when I think about the people that sit in the seats at Walt Disney Concert Hall, a couple of seasons ago, someone actually managed to get a poodle in the $400 seats in the front row. And for the first half, the dog didn't bark, but there, in the front row, the most expensive seat, there was a poodle sitting with a jacket on, and apparently, the person next to him got them in with a bag. And until the conductor came out and did his bow, the conductor bowed and did a double take and almost fell off the stage, and then everyone started laughing to see this dog sitting there. Of course, then the ushers took the dog out because they missed it. But through the whole first half, they had a dog sitting in the front row of the $400 seats. So I'm saying that if a poodle can enjoy fine music, then we can take music anywhere. That's my...
What's your thought about how the clients reacted to the last concert, this Silent Night?
Yes, we played Silent Night. I had a French. A friend of mine sings Silent Night in three languages. And of course, at the end, we said, "We'll do it in French, Spanish, and then English, and then when we get to the English part, then everyone will join in." And to hear that many people slowly singing Silent Night, people were certainly weeping and probably thinking of better Christmases that they may have had when they weren't in the shelter. But it was an amazing, amazing, very moving experience. I wish I could have recorded that.
We did.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on retirement. But I think Jan Perry is going to have him working. Mr. Rosendahl for our next presentation.
Yes, good morning, Madam President. As Chair of Public Works colleagues, as you know, I've been asked to present this resolution for Brad Smith, who retired from the city earlier this month. Brad Smith, who has been the Chief Deputy City Engineer, retired in January, just now, after more than 39 years of professional and dedicated service to the city of Los Angeles. Brad graduated from Purdue University with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. He began his professional career with the city of Los Angeles as a civil engineer assistant on his 22nd birthday. Brad has progressed through all levels of responsibility within the Bureau of Engineering, from entry-level design engineering to division head to chief deputy city engineer, where he was the chief operating officer for the entire Bureau of Engineering for the past 11 years, and as interim city engineer in 2003. For nearly 20 years, Brad was a key contributor to the successful $2.5 billion wastewater program implementing, including the design and construction of the Tillman Water Reclamation Plant, the sewer sludge discharge to the ocean, the wastewater program 100-year advanced planning report, the planning and design of sewer tunnels, and the planning, design, and construction of full secondary treatment at Hyperion, which earned recognition from the American Public Works Association as one of the 10 top projects in the 20th century. Let's give him a round of applause just for that. Brad has been the city of Los Angeles's infrastructure bond program manager overseeing $2.4 billion of bond-funded construction programs, which have successfully delivered 84 police and fire stations, animal shelters, libraries, and zoo exhibits, over 100 park projects, and the currently under construction Police Administrative Building. Brad led the effort to develop a single web-based tool for tracking the status of the Bureau's 600-plus projects, which shows the project's status to the Bureau's clients, elected officials, and the general public on the internet. Brad, your hard work, loyalty, and creativity are priceless. We thank you for your outstanding work for the city and all its residents, and we extend to you and your family, and your son is with you, best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. Since you're my younger brother, I know you've got a lot of time ahead of you, since I'm older than you, and I'm having fun as a young man in this place. I'd like to have Gary Moore come up and say a few words.
Good morning. It's great to be here to celebrate an incredible person, Brad Smith. Working closely with Brad here, as I have the last four and a half years, I can't tell you what he's been a mentor to me and everybody in the Bureau of Engineering. And Brad, I think the one word that describes you best is the word honorable. You're an honorable, honorable person, and I know you're going to have great, great years. And with your passion with photography, we look forward to seeing your photos in an exhibit very soon. Thanks, Brad, and happy retirement.
Yes, before you speak, Mr. Smith would like to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to join with my colleague, Mr. Rosendahl, who assumed the committee chairmanship of Public Works after I left the committee, and say, for my years that I was with Public Works Committee, Brad was one of those guys who was always sent in by the general manager to represent the department on the department issues that really were serious, things that were really important, things that were really public policy-related, that we need to make really serious decisions about the future of Los Angeles and how we would build it out, how we would respond as the engineering department on all of our projects. Brad was kind of the go-to guy. And one thing, and I know Mr. Rosendahl feels the same way, whenever Brad sat in front of us in the committee, we didn't ever question the things he said as being real. We may question the concept, whether it was a good idea or a bad idea, but we always knew that Brad was telling us the absolute truth, that he was really focused on what was the right and best way to go. And as I look at the people behind you too, I think we all feel that way about the entire staff of the engineering department. The whole department is a very credible bunch of people who work very hard to deliver to the people of LA the best service they can in the way we build things and build out our city. But this gentleman in particular was the go-to guy for us, and we always trusted when we called Brad. We'd get the straight answer, the right answer, and the answer we needed to make the right decision. He was an honest man, as Gary said, a very good man, a solid city employee, and we were very proud, and I know Mr. Rosendahl feels I do, are very proud to have the opportunity to work with such great professionals. And you were really symbiotic with the entire department. You were a true professional and honest man, a good man, who really had the best interest of the city at heart in all the things that we did. And all through those years, you've done nothing but delivered projects on time, under budget, and things that we can all be proud of in all of our districts. So congratulations on a great career, Cousin Smith. It was an honor to work with you, and I just wish you well in your retirement. I hope you come back and see us once in a while.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labanche.
Very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for bringing down this great city employee, city engineer, deputy city engineer. Mr. Smith, thank you for your leadership on Public Works, which Mr. Rosendahl is carrying on. Gary, this is great. You've got a team. You know, just we had the championship roller derby team just there, and sometimes there's a championship high school team. One year, USC, when they won the national title, came through here. You're part of the championship team there, Brad, and you helped build that team. I think of the Jefferson Airplane and Jefferson Starship, they had that song called, "We Built This City," and, you know, and it was about rock and roll. Well, for engineers, you built this city. Each and every one of you, you built this city on making sure it's right. And what's amazing about engineers is they have to be right. Politicians have a lot of room to be wrong, you know. But if you're...
Obviously not.
If you're, you do, Bill. Because if you're wrong, if you're wrong as much as an inch, by the time the building is built, it's crooked. It didn't work. You always were on line, Brad Smith, which was your leadership role. And I think that's what Mr. Smith was talking about. You always were honest. You never left trying to not project what really reality was, which is so important. So every bridge I cross, every city building I see, and I know I speak for John McCreary, who is responsible for about 400 of those city buildings, including the most, I don't want to say next to City Hall, but the greatest of all buildings... want to say next to City Hall, but the greatest of all buildings, the observatory, which all of you contributed some way to, and you, Brad, as well. I just want to thank you for your years of service. And I love when I see a run-in to you in the city on a Saturday or a Sunday somewhere, which I have in the past, which always inspires me as a city employee, was able to, and it's all important that you've contributed to this community that you live in and that you work for. So I just want to thank each and every one. And I would be mistaken if I didn't give a shout-out to your Clark Robbins, who gave me such an entree to the Bureau of Engineering on the bridges and the support that Gary Lee Moore does. Although, there's one question. There's a little park for building out there at Pan Pacific, right there, and everybody's name is in big letters except the councilman of the district. I couldn't figure it out. I thought someone was playing a joke on me. And I'm the one who got the project started, but you're the guys who built it. I congratulate everyone, all the men and women of the Bureau of Engineering. Brad Smith, big hand for Brad.
Brad, I just want to add my congratulations. I think a lot has been said, but you are one of those respected city employees who has made a big difference and will be remembered for your imprint on the city. And so we're sad to see you go, but I know all the people standing behind you will miss you even more probably than we will. But the people of the city have been blessed to have someone like you on the staff here at Los Angeles City Council and City Hall. So thank you very much. It's your turn to say a few words.
Thank you very much. It's obviously a pleasure being here today. It's a pleasure for a few reasons. One is that I've actually reached this point in my life, and my heart is still beating, and I'm still up and around. And as I've said to a few people in the past, I think I'm getting out of here with at least a few brain cells that are still firing appropriately. That's been my goal for a long time. I've talked a little bit recently about how I've been blessed in my life. And one of the ways I was blessed in my life was making a decision to come to the city of Los Angeles and dedicate, at least a few years, I thought at the beginning, to public service. But I was lucky. I was born in a small town, and my mother was a personal secretary to the city attorney in that town. And the city attorney in that town essentially ran the town for 20-some years. But I grew up in a home, and I grew to respect the contributions of government employees and the difference the government can make in people's lives. And as an engineer, I decided early on when I was in college that I probably wanted to work for government, at least to start off. Well, I came to LA thinking that there would be some opportunities here, but I had no idea the span, the scope, the vibrancy of this city, and the things that we would get involved in. I'm still stunned as I think back of it. It doesn't seem all that long ago. I've now worked for roughly one-fourth of the history of public works construction in this city. I've worked for the city. That just came on me in the last couple of weeks, and that was pretty scary. Prior to that, those people were building this city. The mission actually changed during my career, and the mission became one of rebuilding the city, because that's really what we're about in the city's infrastructure today, whether it was the rebuilding of Hyperion, whether it's the rebuilding of fire stations, police stations, libraries, parks, a police headquarters facility. That's what we're about today. And it's been, it was an interesting thing that I didn't quite recognize coming into this career, but it's where we are today. And I think it needs to be the mission, and not only of all the people behind you, it clearly is, these great other engineers of the city, but I would hope that I leave with you that that's one of your missions, too. Your mission is to leave this city in a better place, not just socially and from a human standpoint than you found it, but also physically than you found it. And so I would ask that you keep that in mind as the final things that I have to say here. I know that these members that have spoken here today get it, as I said to them in an email. And thank you for that. Keep it up. The city needs it. The people need it. It's been an honor and a tremendous privilege to work for you, for this city, and with the people standing behind me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And don't be a stranger to all of us. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Alec On Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, let's run through the agenda very quickly.
Approval of the January 15 minutes.
Yes, Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Park seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to go through public comments?
No, we'll go through the agenda first.
First, there's a request to continue item number 11 until January 25.
That will be continued to January 25.
Next are items 1 through 11, with the exception of 11, and those are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so public hearings have already been held.
Yes, they have.
Okay. Any specials, colleagues, on items 1 through 10? Yes?
Madam President, if I could, we could continue item number 2 for two weeks, please.
Okay, there had been a request to go forthwith on that. Okay. Well, you said for two weeks?
For two weeks, yes.
Yeah, Mr. Labange?
Five, please, special.
Five. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Next are items 12 through 27, and those are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. And Madam President, there are cards on 15 and 23.
Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Sorry.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Item, yes.
Madam President, I'm sorry. Item number 27 needs to be reconsidered because that will be continued to the special meeting on January 23.
Thank you. So please, open the roll and reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That will be continued. Next item?
And the hearing for that item has been closed.
Thank you.
Next is the special.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Alec On Cardenas, Grill, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam.
Thank you. Please open the roll. I mean, excuse me, please go through the items.
Items number 28 and 29 are items which public hearings have been held. The plum reports have been submitted for those items.
Excuse me, no reports, you said?
The, there were the plum reports, the Planning Land Use Management Committee reports have been submitted on those two items.
Okay. Any specials? Yes, Mr. Weezer. I'm sorry?
28 and 29, is that special?
If you want to call it special.
Yes, please.
28 and 29. Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item?
Next is item number 30, and that is an item for which public hearing has not been held. There is an urgency clause associated with this one. 12 votes are required.
We only have 11.
This can be voted on, and it'll just carry forward for another week.
Anyone wish to call that special? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. It'll be held over for one week.
Can we have 18 forthwith?
18 forthwith. Madam Clerk, should we move those items, 28 and 29, back to the irregular agenda? Okay, those will be moved to the irregular agenda. Colleagues, we did receive cards just now for 17, 19, and 20, so if we could open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those will be called special, 17, 19, and 20. Thank you. Mr. Westen, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you. I am a very, very patient man, Madam President. It is my pleasure, and I want to ask Jeff and John to come up with me at this point in time. It's my pleasure to introduce to you, yeah, come on, guys, to introduce to you some young men who are working very, very hard in our community to make it a better community and to help young people realize their dreams of a productive life. Some time ago, about a year and a half ago, we had this idea. It was Kamani Black from my office, and Leon, and we were in the parking lot of the district office, and we came up with creating this agency that would work within the community. I will not spend time telling you all of the things that this great agency does, but I will say, one of the fun components is that we decided that we would have an athletic component. I already came to you over the summer and presented you with the flag football champions of Project Save. Today, I'm here to present you with the basketball champions of Project Save. But before I do that, I want to take just a moment, if I may, to say that, you know, personally, I'm proud of a lot of things that I've done in my life, and I'm blessed to have received a good education. But the most important education that I ever received was on the streets of the city where I grew up, in the same types of areas where the young men behind me grew up. And I think maybe that's why they accepted me, and that's why I respect and love them so very much. So we decided we were going to have a midnight basketball league, which is a lot of work, if you don't know that. And in order to have a midnight basketball league, that means you've got to have individuals that are going to be willing to work until after midnight. I've worked well with every department head within the city of LA, but I haven't, I can't find one that I enjoy working with more than John McCree, who is to my right. So let's give our great Rick and Parks Department Head, John McCree, a round of applause. Because when I told him what I wanted to do, in fact, whenever I make a request of him, he's always there. Anyway, the gym at Rancho Cienaco was open till midnight, and we had teams from council districts 8, 9, 10, 11, and 15 throughout the city of Los Angeles, individuals that have affiliations with different sets. We played Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it started in October, ended December 1. During that entire time, we had one incident, and it was the young men, and some not-so-young men, standing behind me, that stopped the whole program, brought everybody in, and we did not have one incident after that. And also, you should know that while this midnight basketball league was going on, there was only one homicide that occurred in or around the district that I represent. So we're very proud of that. So with that said, I want to give some awards out to some very deserving people. As a quick surprise, just because these guys have been friends of mine for a long time, and they were the ones who ran the whole site, I want to give Big Brother awards to T. Rogers and Shell Dog. T., this is you. Where's Shell? And I want, and I want you guys, T. and Shell especially, well, T., you look good, too, but these guys, Rich Shell Dog is always clean. I mean, look at him, his hat and everything. Thank you, guys, for everything.
And Mr., okay, and you want to go ahead and do that, Ms. Han, then? Okay, Ms. Han.
It's also, well, can I finish? I won't, trust me, Janice, you're in my speech here. You got to trust me. Also, I want to give to, in order for us to have our Project Save, we had to find a respected entity that would work with us. And I can't think, I mean, if there is truly a such thing as the Best CBO Award, it would have to go to Community Build. And I believe we have Marva representing Brenda Shockley. Marva, could you come up? We put Marva all the way in the back. Is that... We, they always put Marva in the back. Can we give Marva a round of applause? And all of these men, Stan, Mohammed, Bo, T., Shell, Perry Crouch, his brother Mark, Donnie, Jay, all of these guys are phenomenal guys. They're all wonderful men, wonderful role models. I went to almost every game, and I had an opportunity to watch them. And I just want you to know that I was so impressed with this young man that we decided to give him Coach of the Year, where in essence, he should be called Sportsman of the Year or Man of the Year. And this is to Donnie, who's from Janice Han's district, Donnie Jobear. Donnie, where, there he is. He is so respected by his players. He knows their attitudes. He could see maybe if a flash point was going to occur, and he'd know when to call a timeout. He'd know when to bring a young man over and tell them, chill out, and they did what he said. These guys are the real deal, and it has been my greatest honor to work with all of you and to be accepted by all of you, and I'm very proud. Now, we had a championship game that was between Venice 2000 and Nickerson Gardens in Janice Han's district. The championship was won by Nickerson Gardens. So let's give Nickerson Gardens a round of applause. Now, Mark Crouch, Mark behind me in this light lime green, come here. Where is he? Come here. Now, I guess he got here at 5:00 in the morning, and he wore this because he didn't want to get hit by a car. That's the only thing that I can say. But Mark told me, the first game, that the winner was going to come from Watts. That's what he told me. He hoped it was his team, Imperial Courts, but he did tell me that that championship team was going to come from Watts. After the championship, we had an All-Star game against All-Stars from the Los Angeles Police Department. And I should also say that this would have been impossible without the great work going above and beyond by the Los Angeles Police Department, and I will bring them here on another occasion to honor them. But there was this game, and I'm telling you, this could have gotten high ratings on television. I think the score was 78 to 75, and it wasn't decided until the last five seconds of the game. And the game was won by the Herb Weston All-Stars. So we beat, we beat LAPD. I do, at this point in time, want to present the trophy, just to show my appreciation to the championship team. I want to present it to Donnie from Nickerson Gardens. This is pretty nice one. What do you think? Can we put it in the rec center? The champions for the 2007 Herb Weston Midnight Basketball League. Before I, oh, wait, wait. We have, Dr. Perry Crouch has a surprise, so I am very frightened at this point in time.
Thank you, my most humble leaders. As you recalled on the steps outside, last year, we did what was called the Season of Peace, in which all you council members participated. And we guaranteed some things. We guaranteed that we would work together with your office. We guaranteed that we was going back into the neighborhoods, and we guaranteed that we were all going to become peace ambassadors and do what y'all wanted us to do. And we took this vision to the Honorable Herb Weston, and we took it to him and told him, you know, we have to engage in activities, but we don't have any money. He said, well, Doc, if you guys get everything together, don't worry about the money. The rest is history. So I have a couple of words that I'd like to pass out. We couldn't have did nothing without a taskmaster. And the taskmaster made sure that we were there on time, that everybody was in uniform, and they did everything that they were supposed to do. So it's my honor to present the Taskmaster of the Year to Mr. Kamani... of the Year to, uh, Mr. Kamani Black. Would you come up here, please? Kamani, come on, man, you always trying to hide from the camera.
There you are.
Okay. No, stay right here. And next, uh, it was unanannounced from everybody out here. We had to have a legislator that was just there for us. And this person, man, came to the games, did everything that he needed to, um, he was the second African-American Speaker of the Assembly, I mean, of the, of the, Speaker of the, yeah, the Assembly. Uh, he's my friend, my brother, he's a leader, and at this time, we're gonna honor him as the legislator of the year, uh, Councilman Herb Weston.
Thank you.
And this award is from all of us, so come on, give it up, give it up, y'all. And, and, and finally, we had, um, the Most Valuable Player, um, of Midnight Basketball, who's at L.A. Trade Tech, and I'm gonna give their awards to Donnie, was, uh, Joseph Morgan, and Most Inspirational was Neil.
Let's give Perry another round of applause. At, at, at this, at this point in time, before I ask the, the championship coach to, uh, speak, and our, uh, great, uh, I'll call him our gangs, our Reverend, uh, Jeff Carr, 'cause I couldn't have done it without them, I'd like for them to say a few words, but, Ms. Hahn, since you are the champion, I mean, the champions come from your district, and they were wonderful, by, by the way.
I know, thank you, uh, Councilmember Weston. Uh, I love the fact that you, um, took your, uh, Project Save, uh, gang intervention program, and, uh, decided to really support, encourage, and make happen this midnight basketball league. I love it that it's called Real Men Choose Peace Late Night Hoops. And, you know, I love, I love it, obviously, that my Watts Gang Task Force, uh, from Nickerson won the final championship, but looking at all the men here today, uh, I am so proud, particularly of those who have been in the Watts Gang Task Force, Dr. Perry Crouch, Mark Crouch, uh, Hank, Donnie, uh, who else is here? Is that, is that, um, yeah. You know what, and, and these men, these men have been choosing peace, uh, in a real way for the last two years in Watts. Uh, we came together with these young men, uh, to really stop the killing in Watts, to, more importantly than go deeper, to find out what was the root causes of violence, uh, in our community, and they stood tall for peace. And every time they had an opportunity, they chose peace, and, um, the, the decrease in violent crimes in Watts has been historic, unprecedented, uh, and something that we never thought we would see. And I love it that, um, they've taken that, um, that initiative for peace, uh, and taken it to a, a championship basketball tournament. Uh, and I love the fact that you, you talked about the story, when, even when there began to be an incident, these men knew, uh, that there, there was no place for that, uh, on the basketball court, and there's no place for that in the streets, there's no place for that, uh, really anywhere in our community. And what great role models all of you are, uh, for the young, uh, men and women growing up in our communities, who are still not quite sure what their path of life should be. Uh, they're still being recruited by gang members, uh, they're still seeing, uh, that maybe that's where they wanna go, but you, men, uh, are the greatest role models that they can have, uh, because you can have it all, uh, and you have respect, and you have dignity, you've chosen peace, and you've brought home, uh, my Watts Gang Task Force has brought home the trophy, the championship, uh, you've given me another reason to be proud of you, and you've given me some more bragging rights around this horseshoe, and we have to fight for our bragging rights around here. But thank you to John McCree, thank you, Jeff Carr, thank you, Herb Weston, uh, for really making this happen, uh, it means a lot to me. I wanna come out and see some games, uh, at, uh, next year's season.
And you, and you're definitely welcome to come next year, and we, with the challenge to all the other council members, please have your intervention agencies and your, your, uh, gang prevention agencies get with us, we have room, and all are welcome. And Mr. Rosendahl, you should know that, that an organization from your area made it to the championship game. They made it to the championship. And, and T. Rogers and Shell Dog have guaranteed that next year, the winner will be from the tenth district, right, T. Rogers?
I don't know, Ms. Perry, Ms. Perry, yes, Ms. Perry, uh, has also, I think, has taken up the challenge, uh, before we go to the others, okay? Ms., Ms. Perry.
Okay, uh, thank you, I, I don't need to challenge, I just need to, give me the template on it, uh, I'd like to work on one over in, uh, well, actually, you know, Kobe Bryant built a court for us over in Green Meadows, and, uh, you know, we got a real nice court, um, there's a league in Skid Row, started by a gentleman, lovely man, whose name is OG Mann, and he actually brought his league down to, uh, South Park, uh, and, uh, it was pretty impressive. But, uh, we, we, we have a nice court, it is underutilized, so, you know, maybe, uh, Kamani or somebody could give me the, uh, breakdown on costs, and, uh, I would be just absolutely thrilled to sponsor activity in one of the parks. With one inclusion, you need to have some peace in there for the women, okay? Don't forget that.
Our next.
See, OG Mann is way ahead of you, see, he already did that, so, you know, you need to catch up on that part too, okay?
What we're gonna do, we're, we're, we did football, Ms. Perry, flag football, we've done basketball, next year, we're gonna have a men's and women's league, this year, we're gonna do softball with, it'll be co-ed, so no.
Well, see, women can play basketball too, you know, so it's, it's all right.
No, we're gonna have our own league for them.
No, it's all right, you know, you can mix it up, it's, it's good.
We enjoy it when the women.
And you can do that, and then I can help you get the jerseys and all that stuff, okay?
We enjoy it when the women are.
We'll have our own colors, you know, for the ninth district.
And Mr. Rosendahl's now inspired, so.
Is he inspired?
Mr. Weston, for your leadership and bringing the group together, but there's Stan the Man Mohammed, put your hand up, Stan, please. Okay, that's Venice 2000, folks, and what Stan has done and has partnered with Venice 2000 is exactly what Mr. Weston is congratulating today. He's taken kids out of gangs, getting them involved in healthy activities, and helping them get jobs, helping them move forward with their lives. Thank you, Stan the Man, next year, we gotta win this one, promise? Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
With that, I would like to call forward the, the, the Coach of the Year and the Championship Coach, a fine, fine man, good man. Donnie, come on, give him a round of applause.
Good morning. I'd just like to thank Herb Kamani for inviting us to, to play in today's tournament. I want y'all to understand something. This is very important, that we continue to have these type of tournaments going on in these communities. Because like I told Kamani then, we had a couple of meetings when we did have a few, one incident or whatever, we talked about it. I played in the midnight basketball at Harvard Park for fifteen years. Them guys, you, 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 you bring them out to play, you bring them out to meet other members, other guys in the community, you, you don't realize the lives that you save when you do that, because these same guys will see each other, maybe at the movies or maybe out in the streets somewhere, and they'll recognize, uh, that they played with this guy in a tournament, and it changes a lot of things in the streets. So, and I was talking to Janet, you know, we, we, we have to keep these type of leagues going, and I, if it was up to me, I'd do it all year long, because you're keeping these guys with something to do. And with my team, a- and I'm proud to say, a lot of my guys is not here, if you're gonna play on the team that I'm coaching, I want you to do something with yourself, I want you to do something with your life, you're not just, it's not just about basketball, I want you either to check in school, get a job, half of my team right now is at work and school, right now, and I'm proud of them young guys. And I kinda brought my team, I brought some young guys out this time, they, they was never experienced in, in, in really dealing with a league like that, and it was big. And that one guy that they was telling you about, which is Neil Reese, Herb would tell you, this young man was kinda hard to coach, but he understood what was the purpose, and we was there for peace. And, 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 and that guy grown, he, right now, he, he is at work right now. So, I just wanted to let y'all know, it's very important that we keep these leagues going, and like I was telling Janet, we're trying to host one just as well, because when Herb stopped one thing, we wanna keep it going. We wanna keep it going in a circle, so we can continue to get these young men in and continue to get them jobs. And with that, Herb, I'd like to just thank you very much for inviting us to be a part.
See you the next time. John McCree, who, this wouldn't have happened without John McCree and his staff. John, you still here? Please say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Weston. It's always a pleasure and an honor to represent a department of men and women that are out there, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, bringing recreation and other activities to the community. You see my face all the time up here, I don't wanna speak that much, but I have two people here, Jawan and Philip Wiley, these are the true faces of this department, please come up here.
They're there every night, every night, these guys are there.
And I met, Jan, I met Donnie and Hank at Nickerson Garden about three years ago, I don't wanna recall the event, but I wanna thank you that day out there. Both of you really, literally saved my life.
Jeff Carr.
Thank you, Councilman, I just wanna, uh, also thank you for your leadership and John McCree's leadership. You know, a lot of people, um, poo-poo this kinda stuff and say, you know, a basketball league, uh, at night, uh, is not that big a deal, but, uh, if you'd had the chance to be at a few games like I did and see the young men who were coming from all over the city and some of the ne-, some of the neighborhoods where we have some of our greatest challenges in terms of violence, and should've been on the street, may have been enemies, to watch them, uh, compete and to play hard, but to play fair, and to begin to watch the relationships with the fans that came from different parts of the city, and to see people talking to one another in the gymnasium, um, I don't think we should discount the social bonds that get created through these kinds of activities that lead to kind of, the kind of permanent peace that we need in our city. And I hope, as we move forward in, uh, the years ahead, to continue to find a way to reduce the violence amongst young people in this city, that this will be exactly the kind of activity that we continue to find ways, um, to support and to nurture and grow. So thank you, Councilman, and to Community Build for your leadership.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you all, congratulations. What a great inspiration all of you are. Our, uh, last and final, uh, presentation is by Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. A lot of people work for the city for a long, long time. Uh, this man, Michael Wilson, worked for the city, so many activities, he's got a double scroll, all those years of service. Michael W. Wilson, born, raised, educated in San Fernando Valley, graduated from Canotte Hills High School, received an Associate of Arts degree from Pierce, Bachelor's Degree, emphasis on Accounting, from Cal State Northridge, married to his wife, Mary, for thirty-four years, four children, Christopher, Catherine, Matthew, Mary Elizabeth, the son-in-law, CJ, and a granddaughter, Emily. Michael Wilson was inducted into the United States Army at Fort Ord for basic and advanced training in nineteen sixty-eight, transferred to Quarry Heights in the Panama Canal Zone until his release from active duty in May nineteen seventy, returned to his position as a clerk in the liquor department at Hughes Markets after his military service. Now, we all wanna work in that department. Michael Wilson started employing with the city at the Department of Water and Power October nineteen seventy-two, worked as a relief commercial service representative, meter reader, and serviceman, promoted to tax and permit field representative in February nineteen seventy-seven with the city clerk's tax and permit division, promoted to a commercial field representative with the Department of Water and Power in April nineteen seventy-eight, promoted to tax auditor, they don't like the tax auditors, they like better to working in the liquor department at Hughes, with the city clerk's office in May nineteen seventy-nine, promoted to management analyst II, January eighty-six, to coordinate implementation of city's hazardous materials program for the tax and permit division, again promoted to senior tax auditor in August eighty-six, then promoted to principal tax auditor October nineteen ninety-eight, for a total of thirty-five years of service with the city of Los Angeles. Michael was commended by Mayor Richard Reardon in May nineteen ninety-six for submitting one of the top suggestions to create efficiencies and reduce costs to city government, when he proposed to purchase laptop computers for use by tax auditors in order to increase their efficiency and generate additional tax revenue. He received the city clerk's outstanding service award in nineteen ninety-nine. Worked with the Internal Revenue Service, Franchise Tax Board, Employment Development Department, Board of Equalization, and local municipalities to promote intergovernmental information sharing regarding tax gap issues. You ever been audited by the IRS?
Never.
You'd be fun to be audited by the IRS.
I know all those guys.
You know all those guys. Michael Wilson has represented the city clerk and the Office of Finance at the California Municipal Revenue and Tax Association and National Bureau of Business Licensing Officials, member of the Los Angeles Municipal Accountants and Auditors Association, Los Angeles Civic Center Chapter of the Association of Government Accountants, certified government financial manager with the Association of Government Accountants, certified revenue officer. You should've been with the President of the United States this morning in D.C. talking about how we're gonna save the economy with all these credentials. With the California Municipal Revenue and Tax Association, certified as a national licensing official with the National Bureau of Business Licensing Officials, made presentations since nineteen ninety-six to CPA discussion groups, business groups, annual business tax workshops provided by the Office of Finance, the annual conference of CMRTA and NBBLO, people don't know what that means, but those are other groups that you worked with. Also, and that's where I first met you, member of St. Bernie's Catholic Church in Woodland Hills, when I first met you, what did I tell you? Remember what I asked you? I asked if you were a cop. I asked if you was a cop, 'cause he looks like a member of the Los Angeles, and just that look, the mustache, working detective bureau, homicide, he does, his wife says so, he does. He had the shades on. But that's when we first met, many years ago, and, um, when I heard you were retired, I wanted to bring you up before council. So the city council, city of Los Angeles hereby honors you for your dedication to your family, friends, coworkers, and for thirty-five years of dedicated service to the city of Los Angeles, and we have a wonderful proclamation announcing that, so you can put this on your retirement wall with all of the other wonderful memories you have of the city of Los Angeles, and there's always a woman who stands behind a man, and that's you, who's been behind him for thirty-five years, wonderful years. So I'm gonna have you talk first, and then we're gonna have you talk, come on forward. Well, you're gonna talk too, you're gonna talk too. Well, we'll do family, then we'll do business, okay, come on, come on. We're not gonna forget you.
Excuse my voice because I have bronchitis, um, but I just wanted to say, um, throughout all those thirty-five years, um, Mike always placed his family first, and it was always, uh, family and faith and friends, and, uh, while he worked so hard for us, um, we were always first in his life, and all four of the ch- the children, and now our little granddaughter, know that, and now he has lots of time to spend with her and us. So, thank you very much.
That's nice. Yeah, right.
I just want to say, on behalf of the Office of Finance, we're really going to miss Mike. He has done a phenomenal job for our department, and he has done enforcement. He has brought in the money to the city to pay for public safety and many other services throughout the city. But Mike, you've done a phenomenal job, and we're really going to miss you, and we wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
So, in essence, you were kind of a detective.
Yeah.
You'd bring in the money.
Bring in the money.
There you go. Mike, your turn.
Thank you very much. It's been a privilege working for the city for 35 years, and I just want to let you know that these folks standing behind me, the city wouldn't be able to collect that revenue without good dedicated staff, and keep that in mind when the budget funds run a little low, we'll get a little more for you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mike. And I just want to comment that this morning I was watching the national news, and the President, President Bush was on the national news with, surrounded by a number of individuals trying to figure out how we're going to fix the economy, and I think that in your next life, outside of that little city hall, they could use you in Washington to help resolve some of the federal issues when it comes to funding.
They're going to have to come here.
They're going to have to get you, get you. You don't want to go to D there. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, I think before we go on to the next one, I know we want to have forthwith on item number three. First item called special.
First item called special is item number five, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Yes, Mr. Labange. I'm sure he'll be back here momentarily. We might go while we're waiting. You can stay there. We'll just go. Item number 15 was called special for a card, so if we could ask Mr. Arnold Sacks on item number 15. Mr. Sacks.
Thank you for calling special.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, hold on one second. We're going to, Mr. Labange has returned. Yes.
I was out congratulating those who were honored for that very important program for young men in midnight basketball. I apologize. Ms. Ruiz has been the point person on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, the America the Beautiful Campaign, and Keep Los Angeles Beautiful, and it's real important that we up this up because we're not going to win the challenge that we have on stormwater pollution unless we keep our streets clean. So, I wanted to stand here to thank Public Works and push us all. I ask each council member to have a deputy assigned to this program to push, keep Los Angeles beautiful, making people believe in this city through its environment is key to its continuation of greatness. So, Ms. Ruiz, I turn it back to you, if that's okay, Madam President, back to you.
Ms. Reese.
Yes, Cynthia Reese, President of the Board of Public Works for the city of Los Angeles. Good morning, Madam President, and honorable council members. I'm here to brief you very quickly on the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign with our mantra of recycle, reuse, don't litter. I presented the other day at the Public Works Committee, and they did ask that I come and do a brief three-minute PowerPoint presentation. Keep Los Angeles Beautiful under the umbrella of Keep America Beautiful. Keep America Beautiful was started back in the 1950s, and it's an anti-litter campaign. Last year, we launched Keep Los Angeles Beautiful, and it's basically, our focus is to educate, to pick up trash, recycle, plant trees in our community. So, last year, on March 3, we actually launched the entire program. Our guiding principles of the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign, and I want to take a moment and just acknowledge Councilmember Labange for his leadership in the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign. So, the guiding principles are education, individual responsibility, public-private partnerships, and volunteer action. Now, the organizational structure of the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign, we do have an advisory board that is joined with Public Works, and we're also involving both the community and the business community. The advisory board is made up of 15 different members, representative, we have a youth representative, a senior citizen representative, representative from the nonprofit world, the director of our Office of Community Beauty and Creation, an entertainment representative, school representative, a representative from the interfaith community. We have Councilmember Labange as the council representative. We have a neighborhood council rep that was actually elected by the neighborhood councils. We have a member from the Chamber of Commerce and representative from the Business Improvement District. So, it's made up of the different sectors of the city of Los Angeles. So, last year, we launched this campaign. We had over 5,000 participants come out to help us launch the campaign. We did cleanups in Echo Park, we planted trees, we planted flowers at fire stations, and we painted out graffiti. So, what we did is we launched not only the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign, but the Great American Cleanup. And I'm happy to say that as a result of the 90 days of the Great American Cleanup, we had over 26,000 volunteers, which picked up a total of 345 tons of litter, and we had five tons of recyclables. So, it's a very important program to the city. What we plan to do is to educate the public. So, what this motion before you does is gives us a mechanism to accept outside funding. One of the things that we realize is that we really need partnerships, private partnerships to be able to accept funding from the outside, given the limited budget that we currently have. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. As Chair of Public Works, it was a pleasure to have you come before the committee earlier this week to explain what this is all about, and to put this up front and out there for the public to see, that, you know, we can make a difference, Madam President, and this is one way we can make a difference. You can contribute money, you can contribute time and energy, and you can make Los Angeles a more beautiful city. And I just want to thank the Public Works commissioners, especially you, for your leadership on this. And I say to all those watching this, get involved, get engaged, make a difference with your life. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Commissioner for her hard work in this endeavor, but also I would like to ask her, we are putting together the foundation for the LA River, and that is a significant effort to bring in the philanthropic, the nonprofit sector to support the River Rangers. We have a whole crew of youngsters working at Salma Conservancy and developing that link between the youth along the corridors of the river, cleaning up the riverway, cleaning up the streets. They parallel these types of objectives. Can you share with me how we could complement each other and further work in a direction that we are actually hand in hand and making sure that we succeed in both areas?
Well, first of all, with the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign, it is a citywide campaign, and basically what it's going to be is an educational campaign to get messaging out. One of the things when I was young, I keep remembering in my mind is "Don't Be a Litterbug", that was the Keep America Beautiful. So, we're working on messaging for citywide in various languages, but I think that the LA River, and thanks to your leadership, it's been a very important part of the city. So, I think there's many ways that we can partner. It's not one or the other. It's a partnership that we all need to work together on. And speaking of young people, one of the things that the Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign did was partner with Public Works and the Million Trees Initiative, and last month, we had our first environmental youth conference where we had 3,500 young people come together to learn about what they can do to help the environment. So, I think it's something that's going to complement each other and not be in competition with each other.
And that's why I'm asking, because I know we both come from the same place in terms of what we want to see for this city, and that we have to be in a position to leverage all the good things we're doing so that we can amplify our impacts, as well as make a bigger bank for each dollar that we bring to the table. I think the other saying that they used to, and I know I'm dating myself, is give a hoot, don't pollute.
Right. See, messaging works because we remember it.
It's stuck to our heads. So, thank you for all your hard work. I look forward to working with you and making sure we can complement and leverage what limited resources we do have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I was going to say, give a hoot, don't pollute. That was one I remembered as well. So, thank you. Mr. Labange.
Thank you all, and this is good, and I can remind you, it would be helpful for all of us. I know Mr. Rosendahl is in the lead. Have each of us have a deputy involved with Keep Los Angeles Beautiful Campaign. It's extremely important. And one shout-out to the city attorney's office that is working on a litter ordinance to reduce it so the fine, instead of $1,000, is similar to a parking citation we get for street cleaning, so we could get more enforcement to remind people to keep Los Angeles beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Thank you, Ms. Ruiz. That item's now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Sacks will go to item number 15, and then we're going to go to public comment. So, don't go far. You'll be the first in the public comment as well. So, speak on item 15 first, and then on public comment.
Well, I'll have to go back and get some stuff on public comment, but I wanted to talk about item 15 regarding, good morning. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure item 15 is regarding a ordinance with cable television, Time Warner, and I'm wondering what the status is regarding Verizon and their entry into the cable provision or providing cable service within the city of LA. And I'd also like to make sure that what's happening in some of the areas in the county doesn't happen in the city. According to a business article dated from the LA Times from November 13, 2007, the FCC got into regulating cable, and in the article, it states that satellite TV is not considered cable service because it doesn't travel over wires, but TV packages offered by phone companies are. So, that would mean that if Verizon is going to enter into the cable providing service for the city of LA or enter into the market, they should be treated as a cable company and not be allowed to use access to the public right of way without paying for it. In several cities in the county, they have enacted ordinances where they're allowing Verizon to use access to the public right of way without paying for it, even though they are considered a cable television provider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go to public comment, you can get your items, Mr. Sacks. We'd like to reconsider those items, Madam Clerk, that require 12 votes. We do have 12 members present. Which items would those be?
Those would be items 1 and 30.
Items 1 and 30, okay. If we could open reconsideration on items 1 and 30. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, we're on this.
Yes, we're just going to vote on that. We reconsider them.
Oh, okay.
So, Madam Clerk, open the roll on those two items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Ruiz, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two, I had asked for a continuance for two weeks. If we could continue that for next Wednesday instead of the two weeks, please. There's an escrow pending on that property, and we'd like to not jeopardize that escrow.
We'll have that continue till Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Going to public comment, Mr. Sacks, followed by Michael Hunt, followed by Mary, excuse me, Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning. Thank you very much again, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, I'd like to know what the status is on the fee waiver endorsement that was a fee waiver, request by the mayor for the fee waivers and the endorsement, where we stand on that. And then last week, I happened to bring up the fact about transparency, and although I wasn't very clear in my, what I was trying to bring across, maybe I could redo that a little bit and give you an idea of what I meant. In December 31, 2007, the Downtown News published a little article regarding the metro red line from downtown Los Angeles to the Pacific Ocean. People will be asking for funding for the red line to extend it. Unfortunately, it's not the red line that extends from Western Avenue, it's the purple line, and it should be made clear that funding for the purple line to continue to the Pacific Ocean is what's necessary. Funding for the red line would be redundant unless you want to extend it through Hollywood. Please, that's a matter of transparency. Then I'd also like to point out that today's agenda, item number two referred to the Community Development Agency, excuse me, the Community Development Department, the Community Redevelopment Agency, and Housing and Community and Economic Development Agency Committee. In yesterday's Audit and Governance Efficiency Committee meeting, the assessment of the Los Angeles Housing Department's homeownership loan, of the Los Angeles Housing Department. And then we also have a request for the Affordable Housing Commission. That's five commissions getting funding before $1 even goes to the problem. Why is the redundancy in having five housing commission or five committees regarding housing when the city is so poor and we need the funding for regular housing? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Hunt.
Good morning, you guys. I got bad news. We're in our last two weeks here with your support, so I am asking you guys to support us on the last two weeks of this issue. We need everybody's support to get us out of here. I think we came up to terms in agreement. We need to meet with the 11th District, but the shenanigans, all the fights is over, Mr. Parks, everything is gone. We're on our last two weeks, so with you guys' support, you guys can make that all happen. It's been nice, it's been real, but it's time to get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, everybody. I must confess, I have a little laryngitis. I've been all over the country trying to fight the battles that I'm known as Melrose Larry Green to fight, and I'll just be very brief. I won't take 12 minutes and 33 seconds, although that is what's left in public comment, and I'm the last speaker. I'll just take two minutes. You know.
There's a few after you.
Okay, good. I'm not a lawyer. I never want to be accused of being a lawyer, but there's a lot of stuff going on with this presidential campaign that I think has a lot of questions in my mind. Now, I'm friends with the mayor, and I would never throw the mayor under the bus, but a lot of people in the LAPD have been asking me off the record, when the mayor's campaigning for Hillary Clinton, is he doing this on his own time, or is he doing this on the city's dime? And I think that this is an important issue that needs to be discussed by the mayor, because the last time I checked, he was in Iowa, he's in New Hampshire, he's probably going to go to Florida. And I also think that it's important that this city council invite all the presidential candidates to address the city council. Now, look, it's no secret, I'm a Republican, but this is not a coronation, this is an election. I saw Herb on TV yesterday with John Edwards. John Edwards and Barack Obama are both very electable, very electable. And I hope, I don't even want to mention her name, I would like this city council to invite all the candidates, including Mrs. Clinton, to speak to the council. I'd like to see this council sponsoring debates on a bipartisan level with Republicans and Democrats. Many, many moons ago, when I ran for mayor, you had a TV show at Century Cable, and you hosted it. You're Bill Rosendahl, and I was there with Mayor Reardon. And 15 years later, I'm still Melrose Larry Green, and believe you me, this is an election, not a coronation. I'm off to Florida tomorrow. I'll be back February 3. Until February 5, I support Barack Obama.
Thank you very much. On January 31, there will be a debate here in the city of Los Angeles. Yvonne Michelle Autry, followed by Matt Dowd.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Thank you for an opportunity to address the city council. I'd like to advocate first and foremost, on behalf of family housing, it had come to my attention through USEP that in the last 20 years, Gladys Park hadn't received any funding. I'd like to advocate and recommend that the monies which had been set aside for the children's benefit, I believe it was in the total of about $2 million, which has not been allocated, would be used to create a park separate from Gladys Park for the children's benefit. There is money, but it has never been awarded, to my knowledge, about $2 million in 2005. in two thousand and five, according to an audit by the city comptroller. And I don't know where the monies are, but I don't see why it's not allocated to provide a safe environment for the children downtown to enjoy their recreation and their playtime. Again, I would like to continue to remind you that hopefully you will maintain the fair and equitable ratio between market rate housing and affordable housing here downtown because this has been a safe haven for thirty, forty, fifty years. I'd like to advocate on behalf of family housing and housing for couples because most of the housing here downtown is single-room occupancy, and we need housing for the families and the couples who are still local community residents. Also, I'd like... I had posed a question as to where the homeless are being taken. I wonder, are they being detained or are they in prison or are they in mental hospitals and concentration camps? I have no idea. Since you refuse to house the homeless, which would remove the blight, it lets me know that they're being housed somewhere. It's like a human harvest, like concentration camps during the Holocaust. These people need housing. They don't need to be subjugated by the police. The Safer Cities Initiative appears to me to be a Blackwater attempt to clean up our cities, and if you would house them, the streets would be clean for the gentry and everyone else in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Matt Dowd. Been coming to the podium for two years now, fighting an unconstitutional ordinance of Venice Beach. And I've been under a lot of pressure and I've been hiding it well, but I guess it showed itself this morning because I was on a thirty-three bus on my way down to City Hall, and I think I had like an anxiety attack, but it was a near-death experience. And I think I passed out and I had hot and cold sweats and... But the funny thing is, it felt good to die. If I was going to die right there, it actually felt good because all these legal problems and all these things went away. And I'm ready to die. I can accept that, and God showed me how peaceful that was.
Madam President, I don't know if he's within the jurisdiction of the city right now in his...
No, I don't have any health insurance. I haven't had medical care for at least two years. I haven't had dental care because I've been violated by the city and they're still violating a friend of mine, and everything I earned goes to keep him off the streets. And it's because of the ordinance that was voted on by the city council. So... But the last thing that crossed my mind was that, you know, I haven't seen my three children for four years now. So there's, you know, there's a human side to what we're doing. So the city of Los Angeles is creating damages and it's ongoing. And Michael Hunt says it might be two weeks left. I might have two minutes left. I might have two days. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, I know we moved quickly from fifteen to public comment, so we didn't do the vote. If we could open the roll on item number fifteen, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
It's been a request by Mr. Weezer to consider items twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Mr. Weezer? Mr. Weezer? Mr. Weezer, items twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Thank you very much, Madam President. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues for allowing this to be Section 245, which we did last week. And believe me, I take Section 245 seriously. I will only bring them in the event that we really need to look at a decision that was made by a commission or department of the city. What we have before us is a wonderful project that's being proposed in the Arts District of downtown Los Angeles. As I mentioned when I requested the Section 245, it's a wonderful project with... It's going to be designed with lead elements. It has a fifty percent set aside for affordable and workforce housing, the first of its kind to provide affordable housing in that area, lots of open green space, and it's being constructed or proposed to be constructed in an area that already has a number of other residential units being proposed or being built in the area. Unfortunately, this project was collateral damage in a debate that's going on in the city right now about whether we should continue to convert more industrial property to residential or other uses. I support that idea to protect jobs, to preserve our tax base, but we should also look at where we're doing this. It makes sense in some places, but not others. In my district, for example, the industrial corridor in Bull Heights makes perfect sense, but in this corridor, an area that will provide a link between the revitalized downtown Los Angeles, the L.A. Live project that we're seeing, the Grand Avenue project that we're seeing. If we want a link from the revitalized downtown Los Angeles to the L.A. River, we must allow a community to continue to blossom in the Arts District. The issue about the plan that was proposed by the CRA and the Planning Department, myself along with Councilwoman Jan Perry, have introduced some motions to have the full city council look at that and let us, the council, have some say whether we agree with it or not. We may agree with it, we may disagree with it, but that issue, we're going to bring hopefully to the full council so we could discuss that. But I don't want this great project, which the community supports, which was originally recommended by the Planning Department to move forward, but denied by the zoning administrator because of this new policy. I don't want this project to be collateral damage. The residents in this area want their community to keep blossoming, and if we deny this now, there's going to be a continued chilling effect around this whole community, and we're going to continue to see many of these properties in this area be vacant and not used to their best use as we can. So colleagues, thank you for your Section 245. I hope you could support me on this item today. We had an extensive discussion about this project in planning, land use, and management. The Plum Committee recommended us to support it, and I would ask for your A vote. And again, hopefully we could have the larger discussion about the industrial land use policy at a later date when the motions that myself and Councilwoman Perry put forward come forward to the Plum Committee and hopefully eventually to the full council. So thank you, and I hope I could receive your A vote.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support my colleague, Councilman Weezer, in this effort. Colleagues, you should know that during committee, we did hear from the real estate industry, real estate agents were very clear that the nature of the streets, the width of the streets, the stock of the buildings are so old that they are sitting dormant, and it would be hard to bring in any of the new technological industrial uses that would be typical to anywhere else, where you would find an industrial park. What was clear to us is that you had major residential uses already a block away, a corner away. I mean, the whole area is already gone for a major change. What's clear to me is that we have to bring together all the motions that speak to this issue, and that's my commitment to this body, it's my commitment to the mayor and the stakeholders who are concerned about the loss of industrial, because we are too. We know it equates to jobs, but the fact is that we are in a position to be proactive. We should be, as a city, courting those industries that are compatible to residential commercial use but have industrial focus. We should be looking at green industries that can be complementary to the infrastructure. These are types of strategies we should put in place. I look forward to working with the mayor's office to see how we leverage the Department of Water and Power, the harbor, the airport, and looking how we induce the type of investment because we want solar energy, because we want products that are quiet, products that don't produce pollution, but have the ability to take advantage of this major facility, this great metropolis that has an international role in the world economy. Our ability to trade, our ability to connect with the harbor is amazing. We have the Alameda Corridor, billions of dollars spent on that infrastructure. So why not be proactive instead of entrenching ourselves in a us versus them? Why not look at even other areas that might become industrial, that maybe historically were never industrial? It would make sense because those uses are compatible with residential. So again, let's move forward with a proactive approach. We will be bringing these motions into committee. I want to have energetic discussion, but I am challenging the business sector, the chambers, the business council, let's identify those businesses that are complementary to our city, that could be compatible with a mixed-use scenario with residential, commercial uses, and stimulate that new economy that basically wean us away from fossil fuel dependency. So again, thank you for this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President, and I commend Mr. Reyes for that well-schooled explanation of the problem. Our new committee on jobs growth and business the other day had its first meeting, and in the inaugural meeting, we had a very lengthy discussion about this very issue. Fact of the matter is, the city of L.A. has lost twenty-six percent of its M-zone capacity in the last decade and a half. We have lost fifty thousand jobs. The city of L.A. has grown one million people, and we've lost fifty thousand jobs net. We cannot live long as a city and survive long if we continue to lose our manufacturing capacity while creating population. We then become a bedroom community, and Los Angeles can never become a bedroom community with the largest port on the West Coast and one of the largest airports in the world. We need to realize that as a city is our responsibility to maintain the M-zone where possible. But we have that argument, and Mr. Weezer is correct. I looked at the map and I said, what a mess. This area is a real mess from a zoning point of view. If you look at it from an omniscient point of view, you look down and say, wow, what a mixed use of things going on there. We need to really have a long-term vision of what is going to happen along the river, particularly in L.A., on what we're going to do to create the proper industries, to encourage the proper industry. And one of the things I want to do to bring to my committee and to recommendation of Mr. Reyes... Reyes, over there. I'm looking there. Reyes, is we need to have that discussion about how we, as a city, can encourage the right kind of business to come here, because our charter does tie our hands from time to time. But maybe look at entire zones, look at issuing revenue anticipation bonds to encourage businesses to come in, to give them the ability to zone off those areas, coordinate them off and say, we will not let this area go, but we want to encourage either growing business, which is one of our fastest-growing industries in L.A., or whether we want to encourage biotech, a very clean industry that we really want in L.A., that are job-producing, high-salary-producing jobs, as well as high-revenue-producing for the city's treasury. And I think we need to look at all those capacities as we look at our zoning map. And when you look at the M-zone map of L.A., it's scattered all over the place. It was almost like an accident. It was like somebody took a crayon, melted it, and threw it against a map and said, that's where we're going to create industry. It was never well thought out. And so I think we need to take a look at that whole policy. I'm glad this happened because it kind of coalesced the discussion, and I'm very happy that we engaged in this discussion and look forward. But when it comes down to, in the final analysis, when you look at Mr. Weezer's district or others, nobody knows block by block better what needs to be happening in their districts but the councilmen of the district and those neighborhood councils that work in those areas. And that's where we need to engage that discussion in that level. How do we allow us to have that kind of discussion on each of these projects? And also realizing, though, we need an overarching policy that preserves for the future those M-zones so we don't become a city that goes down the road and say, you know what, twenty years ago, that council really messed up, and now we can't fix the mess we're in because we've lost jobs, we've lost the capacity to create jobs, and all we have is bedroom community, and as a city, we will go bankrupt doing that. So thank you very much for this discussion, and I look forward to engaging that in my committee and your committee, and maybe we could have a joint committee hearing on this very issue and go forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Labonge.
Very much. I want to support my colleague, Mr. Weezer, on this, but there's a couple of things that I ask the Planning Department a couple of questions here. And before they sit down there, Kevin Arnold and the students from Claremont McKenna College, please rise and be recognized by the city council. They came in here to learn about that, this process, the city government. Thank you. As you walk up, we could do two things at once. So here's a question I want to ask you. Santa Fe Avenue, the Department of Water and Power has a big facility on Santa Fe Avenue. Are you familiar with it?
Michael Grant, Department of City Planning, no councilman, I'm not familiar with.
Okay. Bureau of Street Services has street cleaners that live on Santa Fe Avenue. Are you familiar with them?
Yes, I am.
You know where they're located?
I have an approximate identification, yes.
You know where Thunder Road is?
No.
Underneath the Sixth Street Bridge. So you go back, watch it in Grease, it's a great movie. Anyway, all that being said, okay, I'm for this here, but I also know there's certain existing infrastructure, whether it's the street cleaners who clean the streets of downtown who are there that operate from three in the morning till mid-morning, to whether it's a very important distribution station here. And if we put in housing there, how do you balance it out professionally to say, we're going to allow you to put housing there, but we also know there's some very gritty infrastructure as well? How do you balance it out? And just the other thing, too, I'm for filming, but I know downtown has a great concern that filming has overrun them, and I know there's a studio on the other side of the Sixth Street Bridge. So if you could answer that question and hold my time, please.
Michael Grant, Department of City Planning. In terms of how do we balance the housing with the other industrial uses, this project was originally denied by the zoning administrator. That action had a failure to act at the Planning Commission, and then the Plum Committee overturned that recommendation, decision. Part of the reasons were the fines we have to make. That's not a viable industrial area. We're not able to make those findings. But in terms of how do you protect the residential uses going in there, there's covenant agreements as part of the conditions that the Plum Committee adopted so that anyone who purchases one of the units down there that would be built would have an understanding that this is an industrial area, it's a vibrant area. These are also live...
How do they understand that? By...
By signing the covenant, reading the covenant, that the uses they can have next to them are the highest intensity uses we allow in the city. There's also recognition that these are live-work units, so the types of people that tend to be attracted to those types of units tend to do art craft-type activities in there. They may have a small gallery in there, but they tend to be businesses that attract more single people than we would see as typical family move into.
So they will be notified that this is an industrial zone that you're in, and then it will be up to a decision by the city council if there's another case coming before us, whether or not we allow that or not, but potentially there could be a tire manufacturing plant that operates twenty-four seven.
Metal plating is in the area. So there's definitely covenants on the property, so any prospective buyer would be aware.
Okay, so let me ask you another question. Are you familiar with the site?
The site? Yes, I am.
How close are you to the subway line?
I want to say about five blocks from the proposed line.
No, it's right there.
Believe us, further than when you say right there.
Hey, I know you're the zoning administrator and you beat me yesterday, but I'm going to beat you today. The line runs all the way down, all the way down past the Sixth Street Bridge, right there. And I have advocated when I was on the MTA board, and I advocate now, if you could have, just like in San Francisco, they go below ground and above ground, but there could be a station stop right there at the Sixth Street Bridge. I'm looking for some of the downtown people there that would go right in the Union Station and connect. So I hope you could look at that so you could advocate and leave the corridors there because I don't know how close it runs. It's right next to the... The subway sleeps at night, right there between the Fourth Street Bridge towards the Sixth Street Bridge, to connect a little. Because right away, future, that could go further on down south through the Amtrak Yard, out to southeast Los Angeles County, which is the most transit-dependent area of our region and all those cities out in that part of the county. Just put that plug in. I stand to support Mr. Weezer, but I wanted to put those points in there. And what's your favorite bridge in the city of Los Angeles?
Fourth Street Bridge.
Fourth Street, man, where is this? The six ninety-five Sixth Street Bridge. Come on now. Thank you. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you very much. And councilmembers, as you can see, there's so much to say about this issue, but unfortunately, we have a directive that has been given that hasn't given this council the opportunity to give its say on what we should do on this issue, whether we should continue to allow more industrial areas to convert to residential or other uses. What I'm most concerned about here is that we are binding ourselves from getting more creative about what types of neighborhoods we could have throughout the city. For example, if we continue to allow the Arts District to stay the way it is, where there is no public infrastructure, the city hasn't committed to improve the public infrastructure there, we're going to continue... infrastructure there, we're going to continue to see empty warehouses and manufacturing zones that are not conducive to today's industry. On top of that, we would not allow to have the new type of industry that comes in that could be right next to residential or industrial. It's not the same old types of stacks emitting these externalities that nobody wanted around their neighborhoods. Today, we have industry that doesn't emit the same types of toxics that could be next to residential and commercial. We could get a lot more creative about how we do this. But the plan, as the way it currently stands, will continue to have a decaying manufacturing area that, in fact, does not provide the amount of jobs that we all think. For example, nearby where this project was proposed, we converted an industrial-use, manufacturing use that employed 25 people. Now it is a converted residential, commercial area that employs about 130 people. Some of those people are making, most of them are making decent, middle-class wages, and so we are binding ourselves, we don't allow ourselves to continue to support this. I put up on the screen, if you can see, the green-shaded area is where the project is proposed. The pink buildings are residential units. So as you can see, this area has already started to move towards a neighborhood. If we stop this now, we're going to continue to see those older buildings, they're not being used to their highest use, to stay there, and this sporadic spot zoning that we have done in the past. I suggest that we allow the progress that we've seen up to this point continue and allow a neighborhood to flourish. Again, I look forward to hearing all these issues in Plum. Very important for us, and particularly for the council, to have its say. It hasn't had its say up to this point. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. It's a very interesting discussion, because in my district, we do, along the Expo Line, have some light industrial areas. I did flip, not flip or whatever, changed the zoning on a couple of parcels so that we could have housing, where we know exactly where the Expo Line is going to go by. That would be, obviously, when we look at transportation issues, you want to build the housing next to a transportation corridor. But let me ask a couple of questions. The AZ said what, and what did this commission do?
The zone administrator for this case, myself, I denied the application. They filed under the Joint Live-Work Quarters and the findings that were prescribed to make per the city council. One of them is that the proposed Joint Live-Work Quarters will not displace viable industrial uses and will not substantially lessen the likelihood that the property will be available in the future for industrial uses. That was one of the findings at the staff level I could not make, therefore the project was denied. That went on to the City Planning Commission on Appeal, along with the track map, and the City Planning Commission failed to act. They had a 3-3 vote after a lot of discussion. They had a split vote, and subsequently, the council propped 245 at the Plum Committee hearing. Plum overturned that, granted the appeal and the 245, and that's what's before you today.
When you heard it was 3-3 in the room there, I'm told, and tell me if this is true, the three that obviously sided with the present policy are basically basing it on what? A Gail Goldberg Planning Department decision made? How did we get to that kind of level?
It was both. One of them was the arguments of the findings we have to make in the code and the difficulty of fitting this project in with those findings. One of them being that 1224-X-13, the section that we use, is intended for existing buildings, and this is complete new construction. So that's the biggest hurdle. Rather than seeing a process where you'd have a general plan amendment and a zone change that would automatically come before council, this entitlement path took a different direction, and that's part of the nexus here that made it difficult. Also, the commission looked at the industrial land use study that was done, and they looked at the boundaries and some of the input that was put into that study and what we heard working with the city staff, CRA, as well as some outside consultants to formulate those ideas and recommendations.
And the project, where is the project being proposed? How many units are we talking about?
180 live-work units with 5,000 square feet of ground for commercial uses.
Well, help me out. You know, we have a housing shortage, obviously.
Correct.
We have a housing shortage in the region, the city. We don't have enough affordable housing. We don't have enough workforce housing. We don't have enough this, that, and the other. Wouldn't that be a priority over vacant buildings sitting there and streets that aren't that wide, and we have no dream of a reality, at least in the next couple of days or years, to make it commercial? Why not flip it to a more productive, immediate-need use, which is housing?
That's a really good question, and the key, I think, that you said is immediate need. We're looking at the city in longer terms than what's immediate need. Our general plan speaks to a policy of preserving industrial plan. What we're doing is following those policies the council's already put in place from prior councils and this council. But one of the things that's key here was, this is actually a thriving business on the site. It's a brake manufacturing shop that does business with the city, so it's not a vacant site. In addition, there's currently a 1% to 2% vacancy rate in central city for industrial uses, which makes it very difficult to further exacerbate getting rid of some of those industrial uses, because some of our highest-paying jobs come from those sectors. That was all taken into consideration.
Well, thank you very much for that, but I'm going to support Mr. Weezer on this, because I believe in the passion, the need for housing, more affordable housing, housing next to transportation links, housing that will meet the quality of life for our residents. So thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Weezer, for your-
This case has provided some affordable housing volunteered by the applicant, so it furthers a lot of the goals that Councilman Weezer, yourself, and Mr. Reyes have.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. What I'd like to do at this point is ask each one of you if we can create a focus on how you see your district. If there are industrial lands that you feel should not be touched for whatever reason, let us know. If there are areas in transition, give us an understanding of what those areas are like, what the geographic location is, and what types of industry you see coming in. If there are companies, businesses, developers who have an interest in moving your district, make us aware of what their needs are, so we can start creating a list of incentives that allows us to bring to the table what the city could through its business team, through the incentives to Department of Water and Power, on and on. So we have a great opportunity to try to achieve that balance and understand that we are going through a major change. The industrial base that was formed, was formed around the rail yards, railroad spurs, and had a whole different level of technology that, quite frankly, doesn't exist today. So now we are talking about trucks, we're talking about mixed-use, live-work space, loft-living. These are all new dynamics that I believe could change the character of the city in terms of reaching a benefit for jobs as much as housing. So I ask you, when we set the date, and we'll send out a letter to you to identify those areas in respective districts, so we are working hand-in-hand with the mayor's office, with the CRA, and making sure the planning department is listening to your priorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. That's the last speaker on the queue. So those items, 28 and 29, the Plum report is what is before us. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on 28 and 29, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
That's been approved. Next item.
Next is item 17, and there is a card on this item.
Yes. Mr. Matt Doud. Mr. Matt Doud. And as Mr. Doud is making his way up here, we'd ask that number four go forth with as well.
Thank you, yes. I love Elizabeth Montgomery. See, I remember that show from the late '60s. We had it in New Zealand. I was just a little kid. And I loved it because it was the classic American dream, and the beautiful house, and the suburb, and Larry, I remember his boss, the accountant guy, and they had the beautiful cars outside on the street, those big V8s. And I wish I had the Elizabeth Montgomery nose. I think we all do sometimes. You know, you could just wrinkle up the nose and make all these things go away and be So I want to thank the City of Los Angeles in advance for the Matt Doud Hollywood star, when it comes, probably, you know, in my absence, posthumously, they might say, but Elizabeth Montgomery, congratulations. One of my first inspirations, and here I am now. I was brought to the United States somehow. If I told you this story, you'd see how there was an act of God involved. So I'm not my usual self. You might be able to tell. I'm a little kind of weak and just leaning on the podium. Elizabeth Montgomery, congratulations once more. Kick this one through. That was a great show. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next is item number 19, and there is a card on this item.
Yes. Mr. Doud.
Actually, Madam President, thank you. I think I made a mistake in the rush. It was number 20.
You submitted a card on item 20 as well. Would you like to speak on 20?
Oh, okay, good. All right, well, do I have the time, Mr. City Attorney?
It's, you know, comment, number 19.
Okay, number 19, yes. Thank you. This is one of the things I'm going to take credit for. We just jumped up and down over and over. A Zuma dog was in here, and now I see some event sponsor reimburse the city for all fees and costs. It's nice to see that, you know, finally we're clamping down on these, because we've got the phone tax coming, because we've run out of money in the city, and I want to thank whoever it is who chased down these people to reimburse. Thank you.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on item 19, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next is item 20, and there is a card on this item.
Mr. Doud.
Yep, Matt Doud. I've talked about these before, and this looks like a good one, so I will comment in that fashion, that it just got attacked by some kind of flying creature. I don't know if you saw that. So yeah, this is important. The fee waiver for the AIDS Project Institute, that is a very important public health issue. You know, I even wonder sometimes if we can legislate against shea butter, and we can legislate against, you know, fast-food restaurants. You know, it should be a crime to knowingly transmit these kind of diseases, and let's be transparent and make it a crime. I can call LAPD if I find out that, you know, I got some kind of life-threatening disease from someone who knowingly, you know, did not disclose it.
Thank you. That item is now before us, item 20. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Next is item 23, and there is a card on this item.
Mr. Sacks on item number 23.
This is item 23. Several times last year, not last, Sunshine Canyon Landfill has appeared on the County Board of Supervisors' agenda twice, when, in May of 2006 and in June of 2007, and it also appeared last year, I believe in June, where Sunshine, the County Board of Supervisors' looked to double the amount of intake provided at Sunshine Canyon Landfill from 6,000 tons per day, being a total of 36,000 tons per week, to 12,100 tons per day, and only 66,000 tons, 66 tons per, 66,000 tons per week. There's a difference of 6,600 tons missing. Just to give you perspective, that comes to every week. That comes to 313,200 tons a year, or 6,226,400,000 pounds per year. At 25 cents per pound, that's $155,160 that's missing. At 10 cents per pound, that's $62,640,000 missing. The number of trucks required to carry that much weight per week varies between 440 and 330 trucks, depending on how much they carry. That number equates to 17,000, over 17,000 trucks if they're carrying 20 tons, to over 22,000, almost 23,000 trucks if they're carrying 15 tons. In your information that you have posted, the total of landfill amount is 11,000 tons per day. Keep the trash. Where's the money? I'm glad that Ms. Perry has asked the county, the city attorneys to look into it. Where is the missing 6,600 tons and the money that's associated with it? Thank you for your time, and thanks for paying attention.
Thank you.
It's funding the city needs and the county to understand that the county-
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. That item is now before us, seeing no other comments. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
That item's approved. I do understand we have a special one before us.
23 and 26 go forth with, please.
Thank you. 23 and 26 to go forth with. I believe we have a special one by Mr. Zein.
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. City Attorney. It's on the findings.
Thank you, Madam President. Just yesterday, a hate crime involving graffiti, including spray-painted swastikas, was committed in Tarzana. Immediate action is required to offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 5494.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. We'd like to vote on the findings. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just trying to get an update on what the status is with the police department on the matter. What we're asking for is a $50,000 reward for the arrest and conviction of this individual or individuals who sprayed swastikas and red paint and other anti-Semitic remarks in the community of Tarzana, which is a wonderful, pleasant community, a large Jewish population, and someone's trying to spread hate within that community. So the urgency of this is that we have this posted, these people be arrested, and hopefully this reward will bring about a quick resolution to this matter. And it's not uncommon for people to videotape when they do some of these activities, and anyone who has that information, they can receive a $50,000 reward. We can put an end to this and send the message out, "You don't do this in the City of Los Angeles. Anti-Semitism and hate crimes are not tolerated," and that's why we're acting at this measure this particular day, the day after it's reported. And I hope that we have this passed, and we can have closure to this in a very quick fashion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zein, for your quick action. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Madam President, there are motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Madam President, there are excuses on the desk.
Please.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused on February 1st for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zein moves. Ms. Perry seconds.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on January 22nd for city business. A motion is required.
Yes. Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Park seconds.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused on February 11th for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Smith seconds.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on February 22nd for personal business. A motion is required.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Ms. Hahn seconds.
Councilmember Gruel requests to leave at 11:30 a.m. on March 26th for city business. This meets policy.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. That's approved.
Councilmember Alacon requests to be excused on February 5th and 6th for personal business. This meets policy.
Thank you. He'll be excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on January 22nd for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Rosendahl moves. Mr. Cardenas seconds.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Any announcements? If not, we do have adjourning motions. If we could ask everyone to please rise. Yes, before we go to adjournments, Mr. Parks.
Yes, I think this is a quasi-business announcement. Just want to make sure that everybody comes out to the MLK Parade on the 21st. It goes through the 8th and the 10th District. And also to come to Limerick Park after the parade. It's an all-day festival.
Looking forward to it. Thank you so much, Mr. Parks. Adjourning motions. Ms. Hahn.
Thanks. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Joe Marquez, who passed away earlier this month at the age of 75. Joe was the uncle of one of my staff members, Terry McKinnon. Joe was a graduate of Lincoln High School. He lived most of his life in Los Angeles and was the business representative for Painter's Union Local 1728 for more than 20 years. Joe is survived by his wife Phoebe, five children and eight grandchildren.
Thank you. Adjourning motions by Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Madam President. Murray Gentile passed away, and he just died very recently. And he was born in, well, November 28th. He was born in Indian Wells, California. He married Elaine Lawrence on August 29, 1952, in Las Vegas, Nevada. And they lived in the Pacific Palisades, California for many years. He was a lawyer for 37 years and a judge for 10 years and was an expert in workman compensation law. He served in the U.S. Army from 1940 to 1942 as a sergeant. He's survived by his wife Elaine Gentile of Indian Wells, California, daughter Linda Gentile Kepi, his son Murray Paul Gentile, three grandchildren, Allison, Christopher and Josh. And again, I wanted to say he was born May 9, 1926, to Mario Gentile and Violet Deal in Chicago, Illinois. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Any other adjourning motions? I know tomorrow will be with the family of Ms. Keles, who had passed away, one of our city employees this last week tragically killed. Will be tomorrow, a reminder if anyone is interested in attending. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.